Comes from high above though, so.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for September 3rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Miller present?
Don Klein present.
And Tuisio is present. I call the meeting to order. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, I'm noticing again, if you could make a note. Meeting is being taped, recorded, needs to be on there because I forgot to say it, please. And the meeting is being taped, recorded. Fifteen minutes of public comment. Kathy, I'm assuming you're here for an item on the agenda and not for public comment?
Yeah, exactly.
So, not having anyone in the audience except our town court, we're gonna go on. Any additions or deletions? 2.1, discussion vote to set date for the special town election. This is for the, for a revote on the roads plan. Kathy? That's your bailiwick.
So, you'd ask for a date for a Saturday?
That's what we were thinking, try out a Saturday.
So, the earliest it could be is October 19th.
Is that your choice?
The 26th, right?
Yeah, the 26th.
Well, that's kind of close to Halloween and stuff. That makes a difference, but I know some people have parties.
Parties and stuff like that, so.
It's during the day, but I'm just thinking little ones. What do you guys think? 1926. Kathy, you got a call?
So, the 30th would be the last day of registering, which is probably better than the 11th because that's a long weekend. We have to do registering to vote.
That's right, yeah.
So, okay, why don't we go with the 19th then? And I'm suggesting 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We're required to be open four hours. But, four hours is a small window, but I don't think you're gonna get too many people up to 4:00 PM on a Saturday.
Probably not.
So, does that sound?
Sounds good to me. Wayne?
Sounds sort of true.
All right, okay.
19th, Saturday, October 19th. You don't, you're not gonna have trouble getting folks to work it, are you?
I have no idea. It's a new.
I know. Well, could you give us a heads up if you? I mean.
Yeah, because you won't have to post for a while anyways, but, yeah. I'll stay home this week, hopefully get it all wrapped up, make sure.
Yeah, just to make sure you're all set.
Okay. Okay, and if not, let Jim know and then we can reschedule it for like a Tuesday or like the norm.
Or for, we're trying for the following, but I think people have enough notice.
Yeah.
I don't think you're gonna have a problem. I think they'll kind of get a kick out.
Yeah, and for not that many hours, you won't have a lot. I'm hoping I won't have a lot of people half-days because it's not a 14-hour day, it's an eight-hour day. So, that might make it easier too. So, we'll see what we come up with. Yeah, exactly. It'll be new waters, S.E.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
2.11, you discuss ideas for getting information out to the voters. Pardon me? Oh, yeah, should we, we need to vote on that, huh? Could I get a notion?
Hold the special election, put the debt exclusion question on October 19th. The town hall from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
You got that?
Second.
Put that down, please.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved.
No.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. He moved it, you said?
Yes, I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You had this, right?
It was.
Yes?
Yes.
Good.
This package information that I just passed out.
That was the toughest vote we've ever taken.
Ignore the colorful thing for just a second.
Okay.
The next page is roadway prepare plan information. This is just a list of the stuff that's in this packet that I put together. It's the sample postcard, which is that colorful thing. That would be bulk mailed and placed around town at visible locations and then email blasted through the email blast system that we use. Website linked materials, so this has the link to the website for additional information. The website would have the pavement management plan slides, which is the explanation, questionnaire. And Wayne, you and I talked about this, I think, cutting back on that a little bit, that there might be some of that stuff that's a little bit too in the weeds for what people might be interested in. So, I can work through you guys on getting that called out. The actual roadways in the plan, updated and edited is the note that I put there because we've actually done some work this spring, excuse me, this late summer, that was on the plan. So, we would need to show that as having been completed. So, that's Bayberry, Clement, and Old City.
And that was from available funds?
Correct. That was from the pavement management plan, internal monies.
Right.
So, we'll edit the plan to show that, so it's most accurate. And additionally, you remember that there was a header called Police, but the police is actually built into the cost of the pavement. So, we had talked about still carrying that for the oversight. So, that contingency, in addition to the regular contingency proper, that column will be called Oversight. Construction Oversight or Project Oversight or something.
Project Monitoring? Well, I think that people's concern on that one was who's gonna be acting in the interest of the town to oversee it. So, the oversight, I guess, is the best on our end.
And next there would be the town meeting, a link for the town meeting articles that were already been passed. And they're included in this packet, but edited to make them pop a little bit more and show that they actually were affirmatively voted and that they passed. A frequently asked question sheet. There's a draft of those questions. I'd like to go over them tonight with you, just see which ones I've missed because I left a list from the last meeting, but there may be more that have come to you since then. And then the live tax impact calculator with instructions. So, on the website, there will be a link to, a very simplistic, and it's in the back of the packet here, we'll get to it when we flip through. It'll allow you, with the instructions, to click on a link and punch in your street, your name, your street address. It'll pull up your assessed value of your home off the assessor's database. And the next thing, the direction to do is take that value and plug it into the yellow cell. All the other cells are locked, so they can't be changed and looked around with. And it will drive right down the line between annually, quarterly, monthly, weekly, daily, what the impact would be for your particular home. And lastly, there's a calendar in here with some plugin events and opportunities. And I just want to spend a little bit of time going over it with you and seeing what additionally you want to pop in there. I guess, start with the color, the color document there. I'm looking to be criticized on this. I've been staring at it for the better part of a week. So, of course, I'm gonna think it's fantastic. But your eyes seeing it for the first time will be important for me to say, well, that's really not necessary, that's too jumbled, or.
I don't think you used up your notes.
Yeah, I thought that. Yeah, I thought that. Over for me. Is that too cheeky? To do that? Somebody suggested not doing the coffee and the coins, but instead doing less expensive than the front end alignment. But, I thought.
I don't have a problem with a cup of coffee a week, less than, you know, buying a cup of coffee a week. But, can I just go back up to the very top of that box? 10-year, $5.1 million cost. And that $5.1 includes the local?
No, no, the local brings up to $7.5.
Okay, okay.
That's just the debt exclusion.
Instead of the cost, I would say debt exclusion. $0.0.
And really what a debt exclusion is, in this case.
Opposition to borrow.
It's a, it's a borrow and not, okay?
Can you jump me ahead to the questions? What is a debt exclusion?
And there's some pretty good stuff on. All right.
So, if you can.
Let's start at the top, though. Voters at the annual town meeting have already voted to fund the program. I would take out already. Voters voted, you know, voters at town meeting. And that's redundant. Voters voted. Voters approved this project.
What I think is important there is the debt exclusion question itself, if the ballot doesn't have a number in it.
That's correct.
So, what we're trying to get here, I think, is the fact that town meeting knew the numbers and supported it. So, I think voted to fund.
Approved, how about this?
Funding for the.
Approved funding.
Yeah.
The borrowing needs to also be approved, needs to also be approved at the ballot.
That's what this, I mean, this is a debt exclusion.
This is a debt exclusion ballot vote.
To approve the borrowing.
I would do like a step one, step two, step one's complete.
I like that. I like that, yeah. One, we voted. Okay, so steps to make.
Well, step one would be supported by your Selectman Finance Committee. That happened prior to.
Yes, through steps.
So, one, two, and three. That makes sense. It's difficult not to slip into advocacy because it's meant legally, it has to be informational.
And it is informational.
Right.
Okay, this is what happened. This is what we've done so far. This is the last step, okay? And the reason we're doing this is because there were so many unanswered questions that came to us afterward. So, people were confused, so let's try to unconfuse them. And on the other side.
Change the time, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Just a good guess.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if, can you make the font on the date a little bit larger, even if you have to reduce the please vote? The please vote, I think, is gonna stand out anyway because of the, you know, the color.
I'd also change the black print to a lighter.
For the date?
Yeah.
For the whole underside or just the date in the middle?
I just wanted to jump out.
If you leave Saturday, if you leave Saturday and the times and the town hall black, but have white.
And the red box? You don't need the word more.
Forget what I said when I said be critical.
Yeah, just cross out more. People, when they get something like this, don't tend to read it if it looks like it's got too much wording.
Absolutely.
For detailed information, go to.
No, please.
I put the town seal somewhere up here somewhere too.
I may actually need a return address.
Jim? I don't, it's been a while since I did a bulk mailing or a mailing in general, but I don't think you can print anything here.
I went on the USPS website, you can. That would normally be where you would write your message to your person you're sending your postcard to. I do need to bring this down to have a return address, though, and that's where I could put the seal right there.
Okay. Because it, yeah, this is their box.
I just have not pulled it like it's from.
Yeah, well, you need a return address anyway.
And again, the plan itself or the information will be right there on that first page when they go. It will, yeah.
Okay.
And Carolyn found a way to
Keep it as.
circumvent the, it being tripped further and further down the page.
Looking at the information packet?
Which is just for you. I mean, that's not.
Yeah. No, I know, but I'm just wondering if the frequently asked questions shouldn't be at the top?
Yeah.
Just because some people aren't gonna want to go all the way through all of this just to get to their questions.
And the calculator.
And the calculator. You know, what's this mean to me? You know, something like that. I would call E a road, roads dash tax impact calculator.
I don't know if tax impact was too harsh, too threatening.
I could call it, well, see, there's a difference in terms of how you're going to name it. And if you're talking to somebody, if you're talking to me, I'm gonna wanna know what's this mean to me? What's this gonna cost me for my house? You know? So.
Should we call, do we call it?
What's it cost?
What's it cost for your house?
Yeah, what's it cost for your home? There's still detail on here, and I think you're probably gonna want help going through it.
Well, that's the thing that Wayne and I talked about, this, the plan itself, it's far more information than.
Exactly.
Even though it's on the web and they can pick or choose to look at it, it's still a lot to have to.
I was wondering if you could maybe get a volunteer from this group to work offline? Wow, that was nice.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
All right. All right. Then, we'll leave it to you and Jim to finalize that.
We'll clean that part up. Then you got the actual roadway list, which police will have the new title. And we'll take the roads, update them, the ones that have been done this summer. And articles, can we go to the frequently asked questions page? I missed the most obvious one that Wayne already brought up, so the first one should be, what is a debt exclusion?
Well, I think it's also, it's what's a debt exclusion, but it's also what's the difference between a debt exclusion and an override? Okay? Debt exclusion first, on, you know. And the difference is, one, the, the the impact on the town's taxes goes away after, after the borrowing is paid for, after the loan is paid. Simple as that, you know? But, I mean, the other, the other one that was asked, why wasn't there, isn't there an amount on the ballot question?
Have that in there.
I see that one.
Number these, obviously, too.
I don't like how come.
Why does the?
Why, why doesn't the ballot question have a dollar amount? Because that's how the state told us we had to write it. The amount was approved at town meeting.
That's another point you just kind of tricked in my head. We should actually have a copy of the ballot question available as one of the early links on as well, so people are familiar with it. And that might cause, make them say, well, why is that number not there? They can then ask that question.
And then the frequently asked questions are right there, yeah. I'm good with this as a.
Sure.
Okay. See if you guys can come back when you're ready. Be ready, one, two, two, review approved vote. SOG. Number ADM19008, awards program for fire EMS department. So, this is a standard operating.
Guideline.
Guideline. I know what an SOP is. This is a guideline. Will a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the SOG.
Let me check, just 30 seconds.
Okay, yeah. Yep. Not sure about that. Yes, could we, Harley, we're gonna take a recess for a few. I'm not crazy about this. This is not a solution. Could you go and check and make sure that he's hearing us? Please.
Wayne's moving him into here, which will.
I know, but I don't want to be showing that report to the other room either.
We're back.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. Okay, we're on 2.2. Could I get a motion for 2.2, please?
I make a motion that we approve the SOG admin number 19-008, the awards program for fire EMS department.
Second.
I thought you were going to not. Can you make the motion, please? Let's just keep it clean.
I move the board vote to approve SOG ADM19-008, awards program for the fire EMS department.
And I'll second it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm refusing myself.
Thank you. You got that, Jim?
I did. I heard the "I." So, long pause, "I."
Okay, 2.3. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the revised SOG heat number EMS 16-006, EMS continuous service for quality improvement for the fire EMS department.
Second.
Luke's in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2.4, another SOG. Could I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the SOG number EMS 19-007, exposure control program for the fire EMS department.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2.5, review approved vote signed. A contract and agreement addendum between Underwater Solutions, Inc., and the Town of Townsend regarding inspection and interior cleaning of the Highland Street and Pittsburgh Road water storage tanks.
Manager.
Yes.
Just today, I received an email from the, one of the, the office personnel in the water department saying that the contractor had issue with the insurance requirements that were contained within council's standard form agreement. And would I forward that off to council in order to get council? and would I forward that off to council in order to get council's feedback. I did as much, haven't heard back yet. So, instead of burning two weeks, saying, oh, it's critical that they get this work done, if it please the board to vote to execute out of session contingent upon council satisfaction.
Fine, may. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve and sign out of session contingent upon the
Town Council's?
Town Council's approval, is that right?
Yeah.
Approval of the, um, the addend... Insurance addendum?
Yep. Well, it's a contract and agreement.
The only piece is the insurance, so that's, that's fine.
Second.
We need the whole thing for the cleaning to, between Underwater Solutions Inc. and the Town of Townsend reference, the inspection and interior cleaning of the Highland Street and Pittsburgh Road water storage tanks.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so, we're saying that pending town council, when we get approval from town council on the disputed thing, then we can sign it out of session, okay? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Two point six, review approved, signed, second reading of policy number zero four two oh one nine, audit committee. That's the one you talked about the last time.
The one change, Madam Chair, you asked me to make appears in point number one, annually in December. The concern was without listing the term, um, it's open-ended, obviously, but more so, there, as a member of the select board, you may be here one year, not the next. So, annual was the, the most proper, um, length of term in order to make certain that there's a guarantee that whoever's here is, is gonna, is not gonna be gone the next year.
Because we said that it was gonna have one member of the board of select.
Right, one selectman, one fincom, and one registered voter with finance experience, preferably municipal finance experience. It's also worth note that the ICMA, the International City Management Association, just issued a, um, a policy update last week, came out electronically, and it was just this. So, we were, or
Wow.
A week, a week ahead of the ICMA.
Wow.
But they're recognizing the importance for transparency purposes to take this process out of and above, put it above the hands of those whose work is being audited.
Okay, so, again, the change was to do it annually in December?
Correct.
And that's before the budget time and after the budget time, so that seems like a...
And the audit?
But it usually is?
Is usually, we'll see, depending on when we get closed, anytime between November, December, all the way through March, April. So, there's a good period of time where the committee won't be particularly active, but at least having the full, the full year, they'll catch, they'll catch both ends of it.
Any other questions? Could I get a motion?
Um, so this is to approve and sign? Approve and sign, um, I would like your permission to change the format a little bit. The chair and I talked today about, um, putting board selectmen at top, bringing policy number down with the title. And then, a couple of later examples, it's even a little bit different. Again, there's a purpose section and then a policy.
I like the more standard, the, the format, so it's just kind of a bugaboo because of the way that some of the, like, on the next one, you'll, you'll see that, okay?
So, we approve and sign out of session. Because I'll, I'll be reformatting the top of it.
That sounds good.
I make a motion then to approve and sign out of session the second reading of the policy number oh four two oh one nine, the audit committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Jim, I'm sorry, I have one other question.
Yep.
Since we're doing that, would you be posting for that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Two seven, review discuss first reading of policy number zero five two zero one nine, contract procedures. And, um, I, I had quite a few questions, so I kind of talked to Jim a little bit about it this morning. I, I think it needs a little bit of work still.
What I'd like to do is, is get your permission to pull it back, and I think Sue's point was a little bit wrong about taking contract procedures, the, the third page in, halfway done, and everything after that, right out of the policy, because that really is, the procedure is a day-to-day procedural issue, whereas the policy, the first half of the document is really at your level. So, I'll, um, I'll make a few edits.
I mean, I could see that as an attachment for, for information, that that's your current policy as of such and such a procedure, as of such and such a day, but, um, you may end up changing that
Right.
as, as things go, so, um...
Don't wait, I'll leave, do withdraw this one, and I'll get it back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll pass over that.
I think you could do the same thing with the...
Oh, yeah.
I guess you should reformat that, too. Because when you read it, it's policy number, and then it goes right into purpose, and really, the policy, the description lines up there, too. I did, too.
Sorry, but I hadn't had a chance to read it, I just got it.
That's fine, so we're gonna get this one on the next agenda, please?
Yep.
All right.
So, just from my clarification, um, you're gonna pull up section three?
Yeah, yeah, this is your section.
Because that's really your mainly whack, not ours.
Yeah.
Sue, now we're on two eight, first reading of policy zero six two zero one nine, weapons in public buildings, Jim?
The same formatting issue, uh, so we'll, I'll follow what you and I did earlier, Sue, on the, um, the animals. But, this is a policy that comes from council, and it addresses the issue of the board's obligation to provide safe working and visiting business-conducting environment in municipal buildings. There's one edit that Sue and I talked about earlier today that will appear in the next version, which will be a specific carve-out for, um, actually, that was unlawful, it is clear, persons, security personnel will engage in official duties, fire chief, police chief, military, so there are exceptions already carved out in this. I was thinking of the animal.
Um, in the policy description?
Yeah.
It says dangerous weapons in public buildings. Are we gonna call those public buildings or municipal buildings?
Um, for consistency with the one that's coming, it should be municipal.
Because we, we don't have any authority over schools, right? No, but they don't have their own poli... They have their own policies for, for things like that. Do we have situations where our maintenance people or someone like that would have need of carrying something, tool like?
Leather, obviously, like a leatherman or something, you know, that box cutter, or Swiss Army knife we talked about.
So, should that be, I mean, if it's an employee that needs it as a tool, to me, that shouldn't be, that should be exempted?
So, under the...
Or at least you should maybe ask council about that.
Yeah, so, under the exceptions, I'll talk to Adam about getting something.
That would be great. Because that's the only thing I can't, I, I was thinking about gadget things that people need.
Yeah.
Well, you, you can, but what I'm saying is, somebody that needs that to do their job, working for the town, could have things like that. You know, Jack and I, what do we call the Swiss Army, uh, I should know. I bought one for my son one time, but anyway, um, but I'm, I'm okay with it, other than that.
I was saying, because firefighters carry, um, leather.
What'd you say?
A leatherman is, is a type of, like, big Swiss Army knife.
Yeah, but they're exempted anyway for public safety.
Yeah, does have fire.
It is a fire. So, can we have a motion to accept the first reading with, um, discussed edits?
I make a motion that we approve the first reading with the edits. Policy number oh six dash two oh one nine, weapons in a municipal building.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two nine.
Same point on?
Same thing.
On editing the, the layout.
Um, and it, in my agenda, I'm going to read that as municipal. So, it's first reading of policy number zero seven two one nine, two zero one nine, um, animals or dogs? Animals.
Animals.
Animals in municipal buildings.
A couple of edits that we talked about earlier, the chair and I, household pets being changed to animals. Uh, visitors instead of customers. And a couple of other editors edits, reduction, reduction of redundancies.
Yeah, deleting the last paragraph on the first page, because that's kind of self-explanatory. Okay with edits?
Yep. Actually, Sue, was the second sentence in the first paragraph something that you had thought of moving as well? I actually have it in my office.
Oh, you have it, why don't you go grab it, just a second. I'm sorry, guys, I sat with him and did this because there were things that people didn't understand why they were in there. I said, well, let's propose some changes then. And he took it down and I didn't. So, this process, um...
It's much tighter?
Yes.
And just so the record is clear, while this document wasn't in your packets and you're taking it up at the meeting, it is the same policy that was on the agenda, so you're okay?
Guys, okay?
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion, please.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the first reading with the noted edits. Policy number zero seven dash two oh one nine, dogs in a municipal building.
Um, animals in municipal buildings, I think.
Yes, that was changed, so, sorry.
That's all right.
Animals in a municipal building.
Second.
Should we just add on here, Jim?
I do.
Um, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven. Ten, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, the relevant point of this one is going to be sixteen eighteen, which will appear on page eleven.
Where? No, we're on ten.
I apologize.
That's all right, it was me, too.
Yeah, and that's because that one doesn't exist yet.
Okay, so we'll pass over that one.
Yeah, that was put on there in advance of my... Quitting the weekend.
Okay. To eleven is edits to policy board of select and agenda procedures. What page should we put it?
Page eleven, sixteen dash eighteen.
Give me one second, please. Okay, the piece that I would like, and I don't know if we need it in here or not.
That's good.
But I'd love to add something that gives the chair, um, the discretion to change the format of the agenda. We've always tended to use the same one, and I find that there are times that that isn't working. The main time that I don't think it's working is, as we go through things, for example, even tonight, there are two items that we're putting aside to take up at another time, and we sometimes lose track of the things that are pending. So, what my suggestion is, is to add another section on the end of the agenda that we don't have to go through every night, but just, it's for information purposes for us and for the public to keep track of the things that are still outstanding, okay? Oh, look at it, you... Okay?
Yes.
So, um, and then, if, if during the time that we're going through our packets, we see something that really is standing out to one of us or all of us, then we can say, it's on the agenda, can I talk up, can we talk about item number five? And, and make sure that we bring that up for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yes. It does a couple of things, too, it not only keeps things on your vision and your radar screen, but it also allows you to then talk about it at a meeting.
That's right, and they're all pending items that we've talked about before, but it puts everything there, so that if we choose to, to, you know, highlight something, or this, you know what, the discussion that we're having now, or even public comment, you know, it gives us an opportunity to, to say, hey, push that one up.
So, would an appropriate addition to sixteen eight agenda procedures be a final sentence? It says, the chair retains the discretion to change the format of the agenda from time to time as deemed appropriate?
I like that.
First reading?
First reading. That okay with you?
Yep.
Do we get a motion?
I was just about to, I was waiting for you to...
Stop writing.
Uh, I make a motion, we approve the first reading with the edits that we just discussed to policy number sixteen dash eighteen, board of selectmen agenda procedure.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? So, how are we gonna stay honest with that to start it off? Well, I mean, sometimes I go through, I'm a list person, right? And sometimes I'll go through the agendas after we've gone through a meeting, and I'll jot down stuff that we said we were gonna come back to. But I don't always trust that I do that well. We wouldn't have another volunteer that wants to get that list started, would we?
I volunteer to read something. Yeah, but I'd like to see your list, so I, because I have been, but I, but I haven't done...
Because I, I see you do that, I see you take notes of...
I take notes, and I usually put the list together, but sometimes I forget. So, I know my list is incomplete.
Okay, well, maybe between the two of us, how about if I give you my list, or you actually have?
I have your list.
You have my list.
I just want to be cautious that we don't.
No, I don't want to, I, I'm trying to avoid that, too. So, you have our working list at this point.
Right.
Okay? Can you just work with Don to see if he has things to add to that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think that's good, because that's all this that we've talked about, you've talked about as a board publicly, so there's no there's no problem with that.
No.
And this is just Don adding things up at his list to it, and we're square with that.
And just keeping us, making sure that we're going to do that every week, so, and I don't mind at all, by the way, and I expect that you guys are going to add things to the agenda in time, so that's a place that you guys just let Jim know you want to talk about something.
Okay.
Okay? Do you need a vote on that?
No, we have to vote.
To au, well, no, to authorize, we already put that on the table.
It's both policy.
It's both policy.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It could be a clerk's, an actual policy, you know, once the agenda shows that part, that the clerk of the board.
Gets response.
That's that's one of the, one of the.
Well, we can talk about that at the next re, next reading, how's that? Okay?
What they've done is I feel sentenced to life to do this.
Yeah, it could rotate with the clerks. I like that. Sue, two twelve, office chairman to sort and segregate policies in advance of Collins Center meeting. List person that I am, one of the things that was on our list was to go through all of the selectmen's policies and pull out anything related to personnel that really should be done by Collins along with all of the other policies. And we didn't get to do that. So do you want to have a work session to go through it all together, or do you want to delegate one of us to do it?
I think you have a nice working habit started.
Okay. I won that prize. I actually volunteered for it, that's okay, okay? So if we could authorize the chair to work with the town administrator on that.
I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sort and segregate policies and work with the town administrator in advance of the Collins Center meeting. By the way, do we have that reset yet?
That's on the, that's on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jim, let me know when you want to do that. Okay, three one, town administrator updates and report.
I'm working off of the the report, which follows the things that were posted on the agenda. On the personnel updates, time and attendance payroll recommendation. After a great deal of discussion with both our treasurer collector Anna Noyce and our town accountant Lori Plord, it is our recommendation that we implement Harper's option one, Harper's payroll web time and attendance software program. This program includes browser-based access for all employees, clock in, clock out, electronic time sheet submissions, supervisor review, edit, approve, and then direct upload into the payroll program. In departments where employees do not regularly utilize a computer, there will be one designated terminal for the sole purpose of quote punching in punching out unquote each day. The cost of this program is a monthly service fee of two dollars and ninety-five cents per active employee per month. We have one hundred and fifty-five active employees, which would put the yearly expense at five thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It's our recommendation that we seek to fund this plan on a prorated share at the special town meeting upcoming, and we implement it directly thereafter once our bargaining obligations, to the extent that they may exist, are completed. And under board action requested, a vote of support if it is your wish.
This is the treasurer collector report that we got the last time, I just wanted to check and see which one you're talking about. It's Harper's.
It's the option one.
And it's option one.
So it does not go to the extent of having physical time clocks, it's web-based, uploading it directly into the into the Harper's payroll.
That sounds like an inefficient way of giving.
Right now, you've got three people handling these documents, four people, I mean, the supervisor as well. And this will take a lot of that opportunity of the human error.
So you don't have to worry about the hardware that's on the last page.
Right, I mean, it may be that at some point we want to go into that, if we find out that having a dummy terminal, we're able to punch in and punch out on, isn't as effective as it would be having an actual piece of hardware there that people punch in and punch out of.
But in that case, you could just get a basic piece of hardware.
Correct.
For that particular.
You do want that hardware proprietary and tied into the system, however, so.
That's what I mean.
Right, so it does still do the.
Probably acceptable, based on the buildings.
Yeah. Because you could see police, fire, and highway. Some turn parks, water, they all have computer, I mean, they're they're all on a computer as a regular part of their business, so I think it'd just be.
But what I'm wondering is, can you have, like, who wouldn't have a computer?
As I'm saying, police, fire, and some turn parks and highway. As a as a regular course of their business, wouldn't be sitting at a computer.
Individually, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't come in and use the supervisor's computer and simply sign in.
Right, there would be a, the second paragraph there in the in the report, for employees that do not regularly utilize a computer, there'll be one designated terminal for the sole purpose of punching in punching out each day. So you would have the one dummy terminal for employees to come in, and it may be that that's too cumbersome. You'd actually have to sit down, log in, and punch in, punch out, and maybe we'll.
Well, I mean, I did it in my last job.
I'm saying.
We all used the same computer that was used in the course of.
I would get a cost for the number of terminals. Yeah. Just to get an idea of the cost.
Yeah.
Because I I have been part of both.
That might be a little difficult on the fire side for the on-call people, because they don't come in and sign into a system now. What they do is that at the fire, they sign a sheet, and it's up to the duty officer that's on duty to to enter that into a system back at the headquarters, but it all it does is track the hours.
And that's going to be for, probably go on instance that would happen. And and that was okay, because the way that would work on is they, you know, employees A, B, and C would be at the call, duty officer would go back and go onto the terminal and enter employee A, B, and C in. There's a way backwards in time.
Looks good to me. So you're going to go forward with an article for that?
Yes.
All right, yeah, just tie all the laws together.
Work with Kate regarding any argument obligations that exist.
Yeah, we may have to notify them or whatever. Okay, sounds good.
Excellent. Financial update.
Do you need an approval on that class?
No approval, but if you if you, I was looking for a vote of support if it's your wish.
It's up to you.
Oh, we'd like one.
Okay. I make a motion that we vote to support the required action for the.
Time and attendance payroll system.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Personnel administration project, the consultant can meet with the board as a whole to ascertain the board perspective on either Saturday, the seventh, which is coming, we would have to post, or Saturday, the fourteenth, those are the next two Saturdays, and she can make herself available.
I already have plans for Saturday.
I have plans for Saturday afternoon, and I would need to leave here.
The seventh or the fourteenth?
The fourteenth.
What time would you need to be?
I would need to leave here, I have to be in Wakefield by noon.
Well, if it was just the one issue with the the consultant, and would you drive time to Wakefield?
I got it, I was going to, I have to meet somebody and then go in, so probably have to leave here by ten thirty.
Even if we did eight to ten, just the one issue?
Okay.
If that works for Don and Wayne to the fourteenth?
I cannot do the fourteenth at all, that whole weekend is on tech.
And you're up for Saturday?
Yeah.
Is Saturday the only time that they can come?
No, no, Saturday was me begging and pleading because it was when you were doing work sessions.
I'd rather.
Okay, so pick a date, guys.
Okay, next Tuesday, nine, I'm available next Tuesday.
What's the date?
For ten. I'm here.
Okay.
So next Tuesday, let me make certain that.
Even if you, I mean, I can make it earlier than than six, too. Because like, that's why I do it for, you know, four o'clock or something.
Dinner at four, yeah. That would be, that'd make the rules. Yeah, I could do it before.
That way they wouldn't be out too late. And what date are we saying?
The ten.
Ten. Four o'clock for now. Texting them?
Clicking the arrow and text. See if they respond back straight away. Okay, financial updates, solar net metering credits. Did I email the spreadsheet to you? Because I I had it sitting there, and I know I actually clicked selectmen and.
They tell you the truth, I don't remember getting it.
Yeah, I didn't say no, too, and you would have definitely dug into that.
I would have opened that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'll do that right when we break here, but I've actually sent it on to the chair of the energy committee as well. It's really most appropriate that it be cycled through that committee, given that it's talking about the cost of our collective energy. And Brent and I are working on a date next week to get together on that issue, as well as the senior center and council aging assessment, energy assessment roundup.
Okay.
So I will email that when we break tonight. Be green communities grant report assistance, we received a solicitation regarding a grant opportunity, copy of it is in your packet. That as a designated green community, we have an obligation to file a report each year with the state, and it's a pretty cumbersome report, very data-heavy report, and we have had MRPC's assistance in the past in filling it out, and this is a grant opportunity of three thou, up to three thousand dollars from the Department of Energy Resources, the state level, so with your approval, like, to put a an application together and work with Brent on that issue to make certain that I'm covering everything that they needed to say, and ideally, I'm going to put some assistance, financial assistance for the report.
That's for their report.
Correct.
Okay, and what would you like that motion to be?
I'm just authorizing the town administrator to seek the DOER grant for the green communities report assistance.
I make a motion. What he said, the energy D O R grant.
Correct.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
You'll let us know when that's done?
Yes. Before we move on from that.
Yeah.
I know that we had posted for a grant writing, where did we have enough of that?
Right now, we had.
We shouldn't really talk about it, but get your report timed so you can talk about it.
I think we received two applicants, neither of whom have any grant writing experience at this point, so we're going to set for a little bit here and then we'll back out into the MMA again once the fall turns, which will probably be for the next month we'll back out more. All right, and that is all I have on my report.
Three point two, selectmen's announcements, updates, and reports. Just like to share for anybody that did not hear, that Ed West, a longtime resident and volunteer for the town, recently passed away. He was a great guy, if you didn't get to know him, he was one of the first people that I remember my husband and I meeting at one of the town meetings. He was he was moderator back a long time ago, he was on FinCon, I think, as well. And he had a special eye that was interesting. I remember at town meetings, if there was a new person coming that that came to town meeting and they asked a lot of financial questions, you'd see Ed walk up to them after the meeting and say, excuse me, Mr. So-and-so or Mrs. So-and-so, I noticed you asked a lot of financial questions, how would you like to be on the findings committee? And I think that's how, that was that was his way of, he not only ran the meeting, but he observed who might who might be a good nominee to, he was a great guy, a true gentleman, true gentleman. On behalf of the board, our condolences on behalf of the town, and thank you so much for for all you did for us, Ed. The only other thing that I would like to talk about is scheduling. I'm assuming we're going to keep going with the first, third. I think we're okay right now for work sessions, although with Collins coming in, I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that. So you guys are all set for next month, for example, for September, October is.
First and third.
First and third, Tuesdays.
Right now, yes.
Okay. So that's helpful, thank you very much for that. That's all I have. Anyone else? Okay.
Chair, actually, I did one thing, I just wanted to publicly apologize to Don, I did place a call and apologized to Don directly for the fact that we sat here, the two of you and I, at the last meeting, and we were well informed that Saturday's meeting was being canceled. Don wasn't, because Don wasn't here with us, and I should have made note of that and conveyed it the next day, didn't do it, and Don changed his his family plans in time with his grandson in order to come back from a meeting that didn't exist, so.
Sorry about that.
Instead of just having done it behind a cloak of darkness on a telephone call, I wanted to just publicly say I'm sorry, that that it shouldn't have happened.
Appreciate that.
And I wrote something and it went away. Oh, well, it must not have been important, as they say. Three point three, clerk announcements for events, and we have none.
We have.
Board correspondence, I have none, there was one thing that I sent a note. Copy due on it. Carolyn had sent me a note about something that needed to be signed just by me.
The grant amendment for the community development block grant.
Okay, I'd like that to formally be on the next agenda, please, okay? I know sometimes that's the long way to get things done, but I want to make sure the board has a chance to look at that as well. And I have nothing else. So three point five, review and approve meeting minutes for August fifth and August sixth. That doesn't look right to me.
Separately, because I can't vote on.
Can't vote on what?
August fifth, I wasn't here.
Okay. Jim, when we went to the meeting last week, the training session on open meeting, do you remember what Adam said that was so chock full of information? By the way, anybody that missed that meeting, have we posted that out there yet, his presentation?
I don't. I don't know that we did.
Could you look into that?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we said we were going to do that for anyone that missed it.
What was your question?
Reference document. The question was, I remember him talking about approval of meeting minutes, and that.
I asked the question.
Yeah, but do.
If you're, if you're.
In terms of, of saying, I wasn't at the meeting, and therefore, no.
Right, if, if you weren't at the meeting, you still have the ability to vote, because you are a member of the board, and that is the board's business. You don't have to, but you, you're not prohibited.
Yeah, and, and we had always thought that you couldn't vote on it because you weren't at that meeting.
The example that he gave was, it could be that you have minutes from litigation that drags ten years, and God willing, you're still not sitting there ten years later as the same board, so if there's a prohibition on voting for minutes, if you hadn't been there, then those minutes would never be able to be approved, so.
So technically, you can vote on it.
Okay.
Okay?
I did read these, but again, I think it would be better if, if in this case, that I do not, I wasn't here for the entire discussion.
Okay. So, any changes, additions?
I didn't see anything.
Edits?
Don't you, if you wanna touch on the other point that Adam made, where we were doing something, putting minutes out, asking for.
Oh, yes, yes, I do.
Or change that.
There was one thing that we changed this week, based on what Adam taught us. This office has been in the habit of sending the minutes to us via email, and if we look at them and see something that needs to be edited, we would get back to Carolyn, okay? He suggested that we not do that, that instead, we get the minutes as drafted, and all look at them separately, and then come here to discuss things, because he said it could be construed as a serial conversation, using our staff member as the conduit.
Okay.
Okay? So, so from now on, we'll get the meeting minutes in the packet, each look at them and see if something needs to be edited, and, and do it prior to the meeting, okay? So, can I have a motion on August fifth, please?
I move that we approved the minutes from August fifth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And minutes for August sixth, any additions, changes? Lots of, yes.
I did my.
Okay, we all set, Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay, could I have a motion?
I make that a motion, we approve the meeting minutes for August sixth, two thousand nineteen. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Three six, review and sign payroll, bills payable warrants.
I make a motion that we review the sign bills payable, assigned payroll and bills payable warrant, out of session.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two executive sessions. Executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position or litigating position, and the chair so declares. This is for all unions, and the chair does declare.
I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to GL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position or litigating position of the chair, and she so declares, preference all union.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, could I get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Don Klein, yes.
Sulecio, yes. Second one, four point two, executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, in reference to the police chief.
I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to, to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct a collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, reference the police chief.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Yes.
Don Klein, yes.
Sulecio, yes. And we will not be returning?
I, yes. So I make a motion, we go into executive session, and we will not be returning to the meetings, we will adjourn from executive session.
Seconded.
Well, we could just make that an amendment to the last one, okay? amended it, okay. And then again, all those in favor?
Yes.
Don Klein, yes.
And Sulecio, yes. Okay, thank you. We're all set.